All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We are going to kick it off with roll call, please.
President.
Montesino. Parker.
Here.
Kidos Carter. Salsido. And Orozco.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. We will now move on to item two point A, introduction of new employees and recognition of retirees. Do we have any presentations tonight?
Good evening, council. Courtney Lambert, Director of Public Works and Utilities, very excited to introduce Leslie Rios, coming back to the city ten years later. She's in Public Works, obviously. Their title is Environmental Project Manager, and she is going to be handling all things stormwater. She is an absolute subject matter expert, and we were so lucky. She's a Watsonville resident. She was with the county and was happy to come back, and we could not be more thrilled. So that I'd like to just turn it over to her to say a few words.
Council members, fellow staff, my name is Leslie Rios, and I've been working for Public Works for over ten years, and I'm excited to be a part of the team and strive for sustainability and environmental compliance. Thank you.
Wonderful, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
All right, so moving right along here, we now have item two point B. And so that's the service with heart awards, and this will be presented by our city manager, Tamana Beas.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great day today to finally be here and kind of like re-start this tradition that began about four years ago, which is at a time in which the city of Watsonville worked in developing a mission that really captured how we wanted to serve our community. And we work with all employees on determining what values do we want to highlight as an organization. So we created as a way of recognizing our employees, our service with heart award. At that time, we established that our mission was working with our community to create positive impact through service with heart. And really work on trying to uplift that sentiment of like, how do we provide service? But most importantly, this award is about how we build organizational culture that celebrate those employees that really help us take our mission to be a reality and to make sure that our residents feel served with heart. And so our mission really helped to inspire how we make a difference and motivate others to do the same. And a part of why what we look at and who earns this award, Service with Heart Award, is those employees that represent some of our core values, that this is work that was also done as a team with all city employees at that time. And our values that we want to uplift is teamwork, integrity and honesty, service and respect. So tonight, this award comes at a time, it was late 2019, early 2020, we create this idea, we start looking at ways of acknowledging employees. And then something that we know as a worldwide pandemic kind of hit. And our spirit of acknowledging employees that were doing good work did not stop. But what stopped was our ability to produce something, a token of appreciation that we can actually provide them with. And today, we're doing a little bit of a catch-up, and it's like four years later. But I was committed, and I want to thank Rosie who's here, who helped me. Thank you, Rosie. Rosie helped me like really embarking, like, how do we make this token of appreciation unique and special? And Rosie was the one that helped me find artists, an artist in Santa Cruz County, that Andy Silverstein, who created a one-of-a-kind glass piece for each employee that will be awarded a Service with Heart Award. And as an artist, she was excited to be commissioned this work, but also excited to know that these beautiful pieces were the way that the city wanted to appreciate service to the community and the privilege that it is to be part of the City of Watsonville team. So thank you, those employees, you know, past recipients and future recipients that will be receiving this very special one-of-a-kind piece. Aside from that, each of you will receive a $50 gift certificate in acknowledgement of their incredible work and support of this city mission of serving the community with heart. So as I was saying, because it took us a long time because of the pandemic to do that, I've asked those past recipients to come back today. And I want to make sure that they do receive at council, which is meant to happen at council meeting, and receive the token of appreciation. So if Mayor would join me down there, and maybe we both. So our original two, like I like to call them, was Captain Bradman Radish and Suriel Vasquez. So if you can, Mish, Captain Radish, work and receive this award because of his extraordinary leadership efforts. And I am working with the city, particularly at the time, I think we're going next to the Owl. Come here, so I think this is, yeah, and I have, where is Mish? This one. So Mish worked on, we highlighted Mish's leadership and ability to motivate other employees with your work through the time that we were campaigning for Measure Y. And thanks to your personal effort, many officers involved and really educating our community was fundamental for the renewal of that very important measure for the city. And we acknowledge, like, you're going above and beyond. So thank you, Mish, for that excellent work. And we're so glad you are one of the original recipients of Service with Heart. At the same time, the wonderful work that Captain Radish did at that time could have not been done without the efforts and the graphic talent that our friends, Suriel Vasquez, we very know, we will know him very well for his talents. And educating our community and providing information was instrumental at that time, and we very much thank you for that, Suriel. And you are also a recipient of our Service with Heart Award. Oh, great. Also, just doing a little bit more of catch-up, Patricia Rodriguez, come over. I want to say Patricia has worked for the city of Watsonville for 29 years. Patricia is retiring in a couple of weeks, I think. And we want to thank you, Patty, for 29 years of consistent, amazing service. Thank you. And it's a real honor to be able to celebrate you once again with a Service with Heart Award because of your excellent work. Patricia worked with the Department of Finance and was able to dispute a finding of the Department of Finance that saved the city $4 million, and it was all her work that got us there. And but that was important, but 29 years of working for Watsonville, it's a bit more so. I want to thank you, Patty. It's been a pleasure serving with you. And she's smiling, I just want to, thank you, Patty. Katie is in Highway One, so you know, there's something called traffic, so she's not tied up in traffic. And I made my notes for this one. This one's, oh, no, hold on, technical difficulties. Next slide. So Katie was honored at that time for her work, vaccination clinic that we did. We all remember those difficult moments. So she's unfortunately driving from Santa Cruz and not able to be here at the moment. Tonight's recipient is also very, very special, and I know it's not just special for me, but it is for those of you in the council, as that reaction very well represented. Jessica Renteria, she is our Deputy City Clerk. If you want to come over, Jessica. She serves as a Deputy City Clerk for the city of Watsonville. A few months ago, we asked Jessica, Jessica, would you help us for three months? And she said, yeah, I will help you for three months. Quickly, three months became 15 months, and she's done an amazing job supporting not only many city managers, me included, the one before me as well, but all of you council in multiple administrative tasks, keeping us on task, on our calendars, helping the community reach its government, right? But that's the work. She did that work, doing all her other duties. So this was an additional ask, but I just want to talk about how you did it. Not the fact that you did it. You did it, we appreciate it, but the fact that you did it so well. The fact that you did it with such consistency and professional demeanor. And you kept us on track, and we really appreciate your dedication to do good work. All of us do. I don't want to speak for the council, but I know we appreciate it all the time. So you are a true team player, provided our community with an amazing service, and we thank you very much for your work.
Can I say something? You may.
While you're posing for the picture, I just want to say, Jessica, when she said, you know, can you help us out? Really, can you do a whole nother job? And then, wait a second, can we get you doing a whole nother job too? And you did it, and you have been so graciously patient with us. And I know I appreciate it and how much your communication skills, your, what is it? When you have to go back to somebody 30 times to get that communication done in a timely fashion, and you do it. And oh my gosh, I know our city clerk has been dying to bring you back into the fold. And yeah, but thank you so much from the bottom of my heart as a city councilperson for all that you've helped to organize us and support us. Thank you.
All right, Katie, we just talked about you a minute ago. Come on up, come on up. Thank you. I'm so happy you made it. You know, I just gave a little bit of recap what it meant with the service with heart, but also remember what a wonderful job you did to keep our community safe in a time that we all were very worried about our well-being and health. And your work running those vaccination clinics made a difference for our community and for the seniors in our community. So we want to, once again, give you a token of our appreciation, and just come in, come in.
Something. I just want to say for the historical aspect, Katie was hired right at the point where we were finally getting all our senior, our older senior activities. We wanted to refurb everything, and then all of a sudden overnight, COVID, and her job just became something we had never envisioned, and Katie just broke through every barrier, got people their shots, helped them organize themselves, you know, because a lot of people didn't have computers. You were doing outreach like crazy. And I just want to say, you not only helped, you saved lives, and that was really important. So we thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations to all the award recipients. Now we're moving on to item 3.0. And at this time, I would want to open it up for a public comment on the items that we will be addressing during closed session, which is personnel matters. Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing that there's none, we will now recess to close session to disguise item 3.8. Thank you. And welcome to the 2024 Watsonville City Council Meeting. Can I please have a roll call?
Clark.
President.
Dutra.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Kidos Carter. Salsido.
Here.
And Orozco.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to excuse absent council members?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Kidos Carter.
Can we get a second? A second. Roll call, please.
Clark.
Aye.
Dutra.
Yes.
Montesino.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Salsido.
Yes.
And Orozco.
Yeah.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Now, moving right along to item 5.0, I would like to ask Councilmember Crystal Salsido to lead us into the pleasurable legions.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So moving right along to item 6.0, information items. The report of disbursements and miscellaneous documents are available for your reference on the agenda packet. And now on to item 7.0. At this time, I will be turning the floor to our city clerk, Erwin Ortiz, who would be leading item 7.8, Oaths of Office to Re-elected Council Members, and item 7B, Oaths of Office to Newly Appointed Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Orozco. Welcome, everybody. I want to welcome you tonight to our city council meeting. I want to thank everybody for making their way here. Tonight is a very important night. It's when we certify our election, and we have some brand-new council members that are taking their seats tonight. Well, actually, returning council members, actually. Councilmember Montesino ran unopposed, and he won his seat, and we're going to welcome him today with his new oath of office. And then Councilmember Dutra as well actually had a race, and he won his race. So we want to welcome him back to the council as well. So we'll be doing their oath of office tonight. So very excited to do that. We're going to do the council members first, and then we're going to get into item 7B. 7B is the transition of mayoral duties. Per our charter, each time, each year, in December, we rotate mayors. It's a section in our charter that says that we're going to rotate the seat in numerical order, starting with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Currently, we had Vanessa Kidos Carter representing District 2 as mayor. So now it's Maria's turn in District 3 to take over that role. And we're going to welcome also Crystal Salsido as our Mayor Pro Tem this coming year. So I'm very excited to welcome you all to this, and we'll go ahead and get started. Eduardo and Jimmy can join me, please, over here. So item 7A1 is the oath of office administered by Sochi Montesino to re-elected Councilmember Eduardo Montesino. Sochi, can you join us up here, please? Can I have you right over here, Eduardo, next to our fancy camera system over here? So I'll have you stand right here, and Sochi, you can stand right here. Let me get you some microphones, okay?
I state your name.
I, Eduardo Montesino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I would support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And elegance.
And elegance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Well, faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
At which I am about to enter.
From Eduardo in a couple of minutes, can I have you? Councilmember Dutra, can I bring you forth over here? I'll get you in this nice spot right here. And Terry Dutra will be doing our oath of office for Councilmember Dutra. Terry, can I have you come up and join us?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jimmy Dutra.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Oh, thank you.
Can we get a round of applause? Thank you. Now's the time for item 7A3, and these are comments from our incoming council members, Eduardo Montesino and Councilmember Dutra. So we'll start off with Eduardo.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for everyone joining us. You know, we don't get that much crowds usually if it's not, you know, a hot topic in our community. But I just, you know, I'm going to keep my remarks. As you all know me, I don't do long speeches, you know. But it has been an honor to serve my community since 2010, in my first term in office, representing District 4 initially, and then the lines changed. I was 36 years old. My daughter was three months. The one that you just saw, she was three months when I first started. I had her here when I was sworn in, so now she's a 15-year-old beautiful girl that she just sworn me in. But it takes, serving the community takes a lot of dedication and hard work. And it puts a lot of stress on, it's hard on the family and stressful at work. But it's very humbling. It's very humbling to represent our community. Very humbling to represent all the working families, you know, when you're represented at the county or at the state level. Anywhere you go that you're representing Watsonville, everybody has a nice story about Watsonville. You always make a connection. And it's a wonderful opportunity to be able to serve again another four years to represent my community. I started, you know, my first term, my biggest, I wanted a champion, Ramsey Park. And it just took this long. But working all of us together, because it took, you know, different councils, different advocates, the community, you know, everybody pitched in to make it what the jewel that it's going to be next year, hopefully. And we all get to, you know, play around the nice life that's still going to be there. But everything else will be renewed, revitalized, and it's going to say something about our community. But I could do it by myself. You know, what you see here takes a lot of effort, representing, you know, the time away from my family, from my work, from my, you know, our playtime. It's a team effort. It's a sacrifice for my family, my daughters, two daughters and my son. Currently, you know, they're not here, only my daughter's here. You know, my first term, I had everybody here, but now that they're all grown up, you know, one's working, my other daughter's playing a basketball game in San Jose, you know, my wife's trying to get here from work. So it's, you know, but it takes, it takes all of us working together to be able to, for me to be here and representing this beautiful community. And just, I want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart. I love Watsonville, and I'm going to continue to serve for more years. Thanks.
I don't know if I can hear you guys. Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to say thank you. I see so many of you out there tonight who have been supporting me and who believed in me.
Okay. I just want to say, uh, thank you. I see so many of you out there tonight who were, have been supporting me and who believed in me, and I really appreciate all of you. I want you to know that, and thank you for coming this evening. And having your confidence in my leadership to not only lead our district, but to be a voice in the city. So I really want to say thank you very much for that. Sometimes politics can be insincere and unkind, but through the darkness, there is good. And those of us striving for a better tomorrow, better tomorrow, must continue to work together to create the communities and world that we want to see. We must not get lost in the sensationalization of fear and get distracted from our mission. So it's only then that we can truly reach the full potential for our societies. I've had the honor of serving on the Watsonville City Council for eight years. I'm now on to year nine, so thank you. I've represented two districts. I've been the mayor pro tem. I've been the mayor. And in this coming term, I will once again become the mayor again. I served during the pandemic as your mayor, and I fought for equal access to the vaccine when it was being kept up in the north part of our county. I made our voices heard, and we got the vaccine down here. As mayor and as a city council member, as businesses struggled, I let them know that we supported them. Whether it was through proclamations, promoting them on social media, or revising our city ordinances to help ease their burdens, I was there. I have advocated for our infrastructure, our parks, our youth and senior programs, our arts, our new and future businesses, our homeless crisis, our housing shortage for affordable, and for workforce and market housing, cleaning up our city from our current trash epidemic, recognizing our climate problem, and implementing steps to protect our environment, and supporting our public safety to keep our city safe. My district gave me one of my largest election results today in the SLAC's election. The, the, one of the largest wins I've had. They are keeping me right here in this chair to continue to advocate for District Six and for all of Watsonville. My voice on this dais is here for one reason, and that is to produce results. The voters believe in me, and for that, I am so deeply grateful. Together, we will continue to work to move our district and city forward. Thank you once again to all of my supporters, to those who endorsed me, like councilmember Montesino, Mayor Vanessa Queiroz-Carter, former mayors Rebecca Garcia and Dr. Nancy Bilicich are both here this evening. My amazing friends who are here this evening, and my mom who believes and loves me, loves me and has been instrumental in my success. Together, we will all continue to move Watsonville forward. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. We have four more years of work to do, and I know we can accomplish a lot in these next four years. My door is always open. You know you can contact me, and if I'm not the one that, it's not in my district, I will kindly find the city council member whose district it lies in to, to, to help out. So thank you very much, and good luck to our, to our new mayor and vice mayor. Thank you.
All right. All right, we're gonna continue to move forward. We are briefly skipping over item seven B. Our special guest will be arriving soon, and we're gonna go instead right, straight into consent agenda. So item eight point O, all actions, all items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So at this time, I want to ask councilmembers if you have any clarifying questions on any of the agenda items listed. Councilmember Jimmy Dutra.
Thank you. I want to talk about item eight C. I'm very excited. So for the public, so they know, we're gonna be getting new signage throughout the city of Watsonville. Some of it's gonna be really cool. We're gonna be getting some big digital signs that we can be showing exactly what, what's going on throughout the city. But it seems like this, we may have a delay. There was a problem. Do we, is this gonna be pushing back that us moving forward anytime soon with getting that, getting that done?
This is a project that the council has been very clear over time. It's a priority, and we want to see it. We've been working on organizing the project. Public Works staff is working hard in putting this project out to bid. Unfortunately, as we went out to bid, our bids fell a little short of what we expected in terms of the bid process. So the council tonight is rejecting the bids that we received, but it's also authorizing me to continue negotiating with the vendors that could manufacture the wonderful signs you just described, so that we can move forward and have those in the early part of next year. So, or as soon as construction and manufacturing takes place. So we will be able to continue negotiations and, and getting the signs in stock soon.
Okay, so the delay is not crazy, like a year or something. It's just seems like just months.
A few months, yeah. This will allow us to continue negotiate and enter into a contract.
I think the, the public appreciates when they see us improving our community, and that includes signs and Ramsey Park, et cetera. So thank you.
Councilmember.
See, I told you.
Casey, who was it? Casey Clark? Who had it? Okay. Ari Parker.
Always happens. I know. My advice when you become the new mayor is write down everybody's name, because at the worst time, that's what you forget. Thank you, Jimmy, for bringing that up, because I did have a question, but I think he answered it, because I looked at some of the other documentation as well. The people who, the businesses who bid on it seem to have a lot of mistakes in the bidding process. So just follow-up question to that, are viable bids, if they correct their mistakes or there's some major issues with them?
No, no, there's, there's no major issues or concerns. They're both reputable companies that do good manufacturing. I wouldn't call it a lot of mistakes. I would say mistakes that in the forms that they use, they didn't use the form that is required as part of the bidding process. Just kind of like technical issues that disqualify them from, from being considered a successful bid. But, but we work with our city attorney team to make sure that, again, this is, this is something that we've been planning for a while and is a priority. So we wanted to make sure the project didn't die and that we could move forward. So this is how we can do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey Clark.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Before we do that, I would like to open it up for public comment. If that's okay. All right, so do we have any public comment? Any folks that would like to speak to this item tonight? Under the consent agenda. All right, seeing that there's now none, I will now bring it back to council for the appropriate motion.
I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A second.
Hello. Hey, can we get a roll call?
Clark?
I.
Dutra?
I.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
I.
Salsito?
I.
And Orozco. The motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, I don't believe Speaker Robert, is he here? Okay, great. All right, so we'll be moved back to item seven B. The oath of office to newly appointed mayor and mayor pro temp.
Thank you. The mayor has graciously allowed me to go out of order to say just a few brief words about her. And there is nothing brief about her resume or her accomplishments, and I wanted to have an opportunity to highlight Mayor Orozco before her swearing in tonight. Mayor Orozco was raised in Watsonville in a family of hardworking, dedicated, and determined individuals. She is a daughter of farmworkers, a product of PVUSD schools, a wife, and a proud mother to three sons. She graduated from Santa Clara University with degrees in pre-law, political science, communication, and a master's, master's in governance certificate from the California School Board Association. After graduating, she returned to Watsonville to serve her community. She was elected to serve on the Pahravale Unified School Board of Trustees at the age of twenty-four and served on that board for over a decade. The only Latina on the board at the time, Maria was a strong advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. As a trustee, she played an integral role in the implementation of key data-driven initiatives aimed to narrow the achievement gap through informed instruction, personalized learning, supportive and safe learning environments, career technical education, and parent engagement. PVUSD has received national recognition for some of these efforts in their impact on student achievement, something that would not have been possible without the support and commitment of educators, staff, parents, students, and dedicated community members like Mayor Orozco. She has served on several boards, commissions, PVUSD committees, Watsonville Parks and Rec, the Community Action Board of Directors, the Women's Commission of Santa Cruz County, PVUSD migrant head start, PVUSD migrant intergovernmental committee. She's also the founding board president for the Watsonville Parks and Community Services nonprofit. Maria has, is currently working at UCSC as the Assistant Director of Customer Service, and she will be an outstanding mayor for our community. And I just want to say a few words praising her and thanking her for her service and welcoming her to the mayorship for the city of Watsonville.
Okay, it is now time for item seven B. I'd like to have councilmember Salsito join us down here in front of the dais. For item seven B one, we originally had Josh Kogliadi as the person that is gonna be taking the oath of crystal Salsito. But we had a change of plans, and our speaker has agreed to do her oath of office today as well. So if I could have you both join us here in the front. I just want to thank Speaker Rivas for joining us here tonight on his very busy schedule, right over here. His very busy schedule, he was able to accommodate for us to be able to take some oath of office tonight, so we really want to thank him for that. I will hand you over the microphone.
Hey, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, just, uh, be after me. I state your name.
I, Crystal Salsito.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for item seven B two, and this is the oath of office administered by Speaker of the Assembly, Robert Rivas, to newly appointed Mayor Orozco. If I could have you join me right over here.
Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mario Orozco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Will bear true allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we want to move on to item seven B point two. Actually, three, item three, which is comments by Mayor Pro Temp Salsito.
Thank you all so much for coming and for being here tonight. I see coworkers that have come from North County to cheer me on. Earlier, my almost-two-year-old was here screaming mama, very confused with my amazing and supportive husband. It is such an honor to be your representative for District Four. I have absolutely loved living in Watsonville, and I look forward to continuing to champion the causes that are important to our community, whether it's Ramsey Park or trying to address our homeless issue or working towards a more safer and inclusive community. And there's lots of work to be done here, and I'm really excited to be a part of that work. So thank you all very, very much, and very humbled to be sworn in as your vice mayor, and I appreciate your support and participation this evening.
All right, so I guess I'm next. Good evening. Today, I am filled with immense gratitude. I want to thank my colleagues, the voters, and the people of this beautiful community I proudly call home, the city of Watsonville. Thank you for making one of my dreams come true. As I reflect on this journey, my mind goes back to twenty twelve, the year I began my public service as an elected official. But in truth, my path to serve others started in my career. In seventh grade, when I ran my first campaign for a student leadership position. In twenty twelve, I walked these very hallways with my father, dropping off our ballots during my first campaign for school board at the age of twenty-four. I vividly remember standing before the historic photographs of mayors on these walls and telling my father, papi, mi foto va estar ahí un día. Daddy, my picture will be up there someday. Today, the moment has come. I am deeply honored to stand before you as your new mayor. This achievement is not just personal. It represents the dreams of every child in our city who dares to dream big. It is proof that with community support, hard work and perseverance, anything is possible. To every young person listening, don't let fear hold you back. Stay disciplined, surround yourself with the right people and remain committed to learning. Get comfortable with feeling uncomfortable. Life is not about perfection. It's about showing up, adapting and staying true to yourself. You have a power to make an impact, just take that first step and keep moving forward. To the people of Watsonville, thank you for your resilience, for your encouragement and for believing in what is possible. This moment is truly ours and I carry the lessons you've taught me every step of the way. I am grateful for the mentors and leaders who opened doors and prepared me for this moment. Thank you for reminding me of the importance of of the importance of paving the road for others. I am especially grateful to my father, who is here with us tonight, whose sacrifices and hard work paved the way for our family citizenship and for my opportunities. Thank you, Papa, for being my greatest inspiration. To to my late mother, who I know is watching over us, I hope I've made you proud. To my husband, my beautiful boys and my siblings, thank you for your love and unwavering support. You are my foundation. Above all, I thank the Lord for guiding me to this moment and for the blessings that have shaped my journey. As I take on this role, I am reminded of the power of community. Watsonville is a rich tapestry woven from diverse stories and cultures. The city has taught me resilience, compassion and the importance of collaboration. And I am committed to ensuring that Watsonville continues to grow as a place where everyone feels seen, valued and heard. As we look to the future, I will work to make sure that our city lives up to its mission, working with our community to create positive impact through service with the heart. Let us work together and join forces to uplift our entire community. True greatness is not achieved through individual accomplishments, but through the strength of unity of shared purpose. As your mayor, I pledge to be a steadfast voice for our city and to build a legacy rooted in collaboration, opportunity and inclusivity. Together, we're not just turning the pages of history. We're writing a new chapter in the inspiring story of Watsonville. And I thank all of you for being here tonight to share this beautiful moment with me. At this time, I would like to direct your attention to a PowerPoint presentation we put together. And this PowerPoint presentation is outlining some of my goals for twenty twenty-five as your mayor. Great, so um. So I do, before I jump into these, I do want to prefix saying that some of these goals will take one year. Uh, but I'm very much committed to ensuring that I work with council and community and staff uh to move some of these forward. And I'm sure there will be other goals that come up out as uh we move. Um, and these goals are also aligned with uh the council goals uh as stated in our strategic. So under economic development, I really want to ensure that we attract and streamline the process for local businesses and planning and construction projects. So I do have suspicion of creating a one-stop hub, which would, whether it is in person or online through our website, uh for existing and startup businesses to get help and resources they need and the guidance uh from start to finish on their application or permit processes. The same for planning and construction projects. I do want to attract businesses for family-friendly entertainment. It is a bowling alley, Sky Zone, Round One. And we we just need something that is really family-oriented. Um, and I really want to take a lot of time to highlight the richness of our local uh businesses. Under environment and infrastructure, I do want to increase access to open park space in our community. One of my goals is to complete the Roanoke Hills Middle School Field and Track Project in collaboration with PVUSD and continue to expand on existing pilot programs of schools open to for public use. I want to bring a community garden in collaboration with the Watsonville Community Hospital Foundation and the PB Health Trust as part of their nurse program. I want to decrease vandalism in uh park bathrooms and that will require us to expand janitorial services and secure permanent funding uh for that. Uh, under road improvements, there's a great dire need of road improvements all over the city. Uh, but as we saw from the payment management plan, District Three is in the most need. So I want to make sure that those uh projects uh do move forward. And of course, we want to continue to identify streets in need of striping crosswalks uh and ensure that resident petitions or traffic calming measures are processed and implementing and implemented in a timely manner. The lighting district, which has received a presentation not too long ago on this and uh we want to make sure that we do make this approach to enhance lighting throughout the city um and add new light bulbs where needed. And one that we actually had uh an item that we just voted on under consent agenda was the Green Valley Pedestrian Bridge. We want to continue that conversation, but we have started with PVUSD to ensure that this project moves forward and it will continue contribute to pedestrian safety and improve traffic flow in this area. Under housing, I want to explore the adoption of an ordinance permitting the sale of ADUs. What are the risks? Will it benefit the community? Asking those hard questions. Under uh the Affordable Housing Program Ordinance, I want to bring that ordinance back uh to clarify interest rate determination and also include other recommendations such as increased number of units that are allocated to Watsonville residents. Um, and of course workforce housing. The conversation has already started, but uh I really want to make it a focal point to continue those conversations so that we can bring uh workforce housing to our community in collaboration with Santa Cruz County, Cabrillo College, PVUSD, UC Santa Cruz and other potential partners. This, oh, we want to continue using California consulting grant writers. And now that we have so many of our plans in place, um, we really want to make sure that we take the opportunity to maximize those grant opportunities. And uh something new that would be beneficial uh would be to hire a financial advisor to help us draft and implement our investment policy for our city. Public safety, a program that is uh really close to my heart is Camino hacia el éxito. I want to uh potentially expand that program if uh there's funding available. Um, I know that Santa Cruz County is exploring uh the potential expansion of this program. So I think there's definitely room for collaboration. And I also want to see our actor pilot program expand through the police department to have addressed non-crime-related incidents and calls. And one of my favorite, community engagement and well-being. I want to have service excellence become a focus for the city. Uh, hiring a customer or service consultant to make recommendations on service delivery for all major departments and implement their recommendations. Under library access and services, uh host an annual city-wide reading festival at Brownsey Park once we open its doors. Um, and host the Read Across America Book Mobile Tours in every district in the month of March. Under uh parks and rec volunteer programs in collaboration with the Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services, secure funding to support the recruitment and retention of volunteers that support those vital programs. Um, arts is also, uh, I love the art community. Uh, so aside from adopting the Arts Master Plan, I want to look to expand the RFP program to hire local artists, identify additional mural locations and funding sources. And in collaboration with the Watsonville Hospital Community Foundation and PVUSD, bring student artwork to the hospital hallways. Um, in addition, year-round lighting on uh of Main Street trees. Um, and the last one is is really um something that I'm hoping can be uh done this uh this upcoming year is uh bringing light up Main Street. So a holiday extravaganza that would include food, live entertainment, photo opportunities, kid activities, holiday shopping and definitely holiday lights. Uh, so I'm hoping that we can work with staff like that. Um, and then lastly, efficient and high-performing government. We gotta uh really prioritize hiring engineers. Rebumping our website currently, it is a great resource, but it's really hard sometimes to find critical resources. Um, so I really want to have that be one of our focus. Um, ensuring that we implement the reclassification study, post-state council retreat, which was one of our goals, the goal of our prior mayor, previous mayor, uh Vanessa Quiros Carter, and adopt our own health and all uh policy framework in collaboration with the Watsonville Community Hospital. Um, so with that, give me one second here. We'll move on to the next item. There is uh item under item nine point O, there is no items removed from consent agenda. And so now we're moving on to item ten point O, presentations and oral communications. Um, so this time is set aside for members of the general public to address account on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion should be taken on any item presented, except that the any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to uh to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it on the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and the district in which they live in in order to obtain an inaccurate record of the minutes. Um, so at this time, do we have any members of the public that wish to address the council?
Mayor, if if I may, I have just one comment.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to let the public know that we did take some oath of office today. We did districts one and six, but I also wanted to inform the public that there was one other council member that ran at this election. Her name is Vanessa Quiros Carter. She ran unopposed. Um, due to medical reasons, she wasn't able to join us today. So her oath of office has been moved um to January as a ceremonial um oath of office. So I just wanted to let the public know for that benefit and we hope that you will um you will join us in January for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to address the council?
I forgot where to pick up the cards. Uh, Rebecca Garcia, former city council member and mayor. Primarily, I'm here to congratulate Jimmy Dutra in his reelection uh for District Six. I had the pleasure of being on the council with Jimmy for about six years. And in those six years, he became one of my allies. Together, we addressed issues of housing, homelessness and transportation. But in addition, he was a very strong uh advocate for his district. He would have uh district meetings. Uh, he would listen to them and uh propose to them and come to an agreement and what it was that he needed to advocate for his district. And in his campaign, he did a lot, a lot of door knocking, talking to each of those voters and saying, I'm here to listen. What do we need? Let's work together. So congratulations to Jimmy. And I also want to thank Vanessa for her service as mayor this past year. And I want to wish Maria uh the best wishes in terms of your new role as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor. I think you were ahead of disaster. More engineers, more consult and more spending, more taxes. That's future of Watsonville. That's when you want to see the Watsonville. We pay enough taxes. What do you think our money grown on the trees? Why you ma make some bridge over the green ballot? Well, have consultants for for spending our money. Thank you. Think about this because we're living really, really hard. The the rent is so high, the taxes are so high and you spend money like it's not tomorrow. Thank.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Um, hello, I'm Assisana Sandoval, a student from Watsonville High School from District Seven. First, I'd like to say thank you to each of our council members. I'd like to give a special congratulations to Mayor Maria Orozco. Um, as we move forward, I urge you to prioritize climate change resilience. Our community has witnessed a devastating impact of atmospheric rivers and extreme weather. And it's clear we cannot ignore the challenges climate change poses. I especially want to recognize and appreciate the essential workers, particularly farm workers um who have endured the harsh conditions to sustain our community. We must act avidly because climate change is an adjacent threat. It's here affecting people who make Watsonville thrive. Um, so let's work together to protect our community and its future. Thank you so much.
First, I'd like to congratulate the young person right here for coming up to the count, coming up to the the dais here. It's always nerve-wracking for young people to come up here and speak their minds. But especially having on being on point with all the things that he raised, that they raised. And so we need more young people like that. Maybe we can recruit them to the youth council or the summer in the city program at some point. But I'm here to actually congratulate both Vanessa uh Q Carter and Jimmy Dutra on their reelection campaign, successful reelection campaigns. I know they both, uh, well, I know Jimmy Dutra worked hard to get elected. And so and then the other thing is I want to congratulate uh Maria Orozco on her mayorship and Crystal Salsedo on her vice mayor, mayor pro temp. Sorry, wrong word, mayor pro temp. So you guys have a great council. Hopefully you guys can accomplish all the things that were presented here today. You guys work together. Thank you.
So moving right along. Uh, so I did skip accidentally skipped item ten A, so we'll go back to that one report out of closed session. My apologies.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, a closed session was had.
A closed session was had on the item of, on the agenda, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. So item ten C, oral communications from Councilmember Jimmy Dutra.
I'll be very brief. We're having a reception next door, so please join us in just a few minutes after we're done speaking up here. We invite everybody next door. I want to thank Yartha for donating a ton of tamales. And I know where it's going to be catered and, and our, our new city manager is a wine connoisseur, so I'm sure she has some great choices for everybody. And I just want to say also, thank you all for coming here today as well and supporting all of us. And I look forward to seeing you guys next door in a few minutes. Thanks.
Yes, you know, I, you know, my, my wife will write a little bit. I do want to acknowledge that she, that she got here. You know, because I want to thank her for her partnership. And, you know, me being in council, me being able to, you know, participate in the community. So I want to thank her for it. But I also want to congratulate, you know, the new, the new leader, the mayor, the mayor pro temp. You know, I'm looking forward to a great year, looking forward to, you know, a lot of the agenda items that are, that are there. You know, fully support, you know, all, all of that, all of those ideas, and hopefully you can put a lot of effort into it. So thank you, and hopefully we have a great year with you guys on board.
Councilmember Parker.
So I add my congratulations to our, all of our old, new elected council members. And I'm especially excited about our Mayor Pro Temp and our new mayor. I think there's going to be some amazing guidance, amazing focus, and I know we'll work together very well. I also want to thank the speakers, both of the, two of them from District Seven. Even though they have very different views and different things, I really appreciate every time they come and they speak. So please come back, not just to see and have a great time, but come back and speak to us. We'd like to hear it. I'd like to also acknowledge the, the many mayors in the room. We have, if you could stand up and you're around, or at least give a wave so we know former mayors of Watsonville, we have Rebecca. And then we have our supervisor, and there's one over there hiding away. He has hair like mine. And then in the back as well. Thank you very much. So thank you all for continuing to be a part of, of the community and making things happen.
Councilmember Casey Clark.
I'll be very short and sweet. Congratulations, Mayor and Mayor Pro Temp. I always want to say Vice Mayor as well. And get next door and enjoy your party.
Thank you. All right. So item eleven point O, there's no emergency items added to the agenda. Do we have any requests for scheduling future agenda items from council? Councilmember.
Me always working. You know, can you bring back the payment management plan? I want to see, you know, I, I missed it the last time because I was not feeling very well, and I want to get down to the little gritty details. You know, about, you know, where priorities and, you know, and where some, some of the details are, be special. Especially if we haven't touched them, like I know District Three has been dormant over there. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to also, if we can bring back the protocols, if the mayor could put together a committee like we did for the charter. And since the charter has, will now change some of the, could possibly change some of our protocols. And then that we can move forward with a new set of protocols. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey Clark.
This is a little more directed towards our city manager. I have a question in regards to the downtown specific plan. Do we have, when it comes to the ordinance, the conversations we've had in regards to what's allowed and what's not allowed? Is that something that's going to be coming to us, or is that still very much in the background on, in the works?
I believe we are going to have some future opportunities coming up pretty soon as we engage in conversations and bring back perhaps some of those items for clarifying language. So it's, it will be coming in the next few months.
It's still on the back burner, but on a burner.
It's on a burner.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Councilmember, are you Parker?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, couple things. Number one, the lighting issues across our city. I know it's a really big issue in District Seven. I've had a lot of conversations with folks, and I'm sure it's not just, you know, they just need it to be a little bit brighter at night. Also, wanted to look into, if we could, just finding some areas, and I think in support of what the mayor was talking about, of supporting our businesses, supporting local businesses, supporting what we can do to incentivize people coming into our city. And I'd really like to have that discussion so that the public can be a part of that as well. Especially family-oriented businesses. Thank you.
Hi, any other requests? All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Please join us in the community room for refreshments.